Good evening. My name is Melissa Robinson. I'm the Public Information Director for Henry County Government, and I want to thank you all for taking the time out to be here tonight. I'm going to go over the agenda quickly for you so you can know what's in store for the evening. First, you'll hear from our Chair, Carlotta Harrell, who will welcome you and explain what this meeting is about. Then we're going to hear from Sergeant Glenn Turner for a brief overview of our Real-Time Crime Center and how it can help you in fighting crime and keeping safe in Henry County. Then we will have a short presentation by Sam Baker, our Transportation Planning Director, followed by a panel discussion. So if you have questions, we ask that you fill out the index cards that are up here or on your tables. Someone will collect them from you, and we're happy to answer any questions about transportation. And we have a great panel of experts who should be able to answer all of your transportation questions. So without further ado, please welcome Commission Chair Carlotta Harrell.
Good evening, and I just want to thank everyone for coming out this evening to hear about transportation. I do want to let you know that transportation is very important. It is a top priority for the county. It is a top priority for me, and we just want to make sure that the public, that our citizens, our constituents, are informed as to how our projects are coming along. We thank each and every one of you all for voting for the T-Splosh, and we want to show you where your one cent is being utilized. So without further ado, Sergeant Turner will come up and talk about our Real-Time Crime Center.
Hi, guys. I'm Sergeant Turner, Henry County Police Department. If you haven't seen anything about it, we have a Real-Time Crime Center. One of the things that we do is we let you register your cameras. So if you have a Ring Doorbell, any kind of security camera, you can register it. I've got flyers on the front table as you come in. They look like this. You can scan it, go to the website and say, "I'm John Smith. I live at 123 Spring Street. I got a Ring Doorbell camera. If there's ever a crime, can you email me or call me?" And we'll reach out, or the detective will reach out, and then you can just send it to them, and then the police don't have to come to your neighborhood. We'll get your footage. We'll put it on Facebook and Instagram, so the criminals that are breaking into the cars and doing things see themselves. And even if we don't catch them, they see themselves. They stay away from those neighborhoods. So we're trying to get participation to do that. We've got about 8,000 cameras registered around the county right now, and we'd love to get that number even higher. One of the other things that we did over there in the Intelligence Unit is we made a Citizen Resource Guide. If you scan this with your phone, you get a Citizen Resource Guide. It's got 25 pages of every department in the Henry County Government, all the phone numbers to everybody, common questions. It's a PDF. It comes to your phone. It's searchable. You can just click around in it. It's everything we could think of, every question they've asked over at the Police Department, and we put it together. But you can scan that, put that on your phone. The last thing I'm going to talk about is we have cameras hooked up around the county. We now have two at some major intersections, Jonesboro and Mill, near the Target Shopping Center, and Eastlake and Highway 155. If you get in a car wreck, the intention of those traffic cameras are to figure out whose fault it is. If you've ever been in a car wreck, the other person says you did it, you say they did it, the officer gets there, and he wants to help you. But if it's hard to tell from the damage and it's not a rear-end type situation, you might not necessarily get your car fixed. So what they do is they call over to us at those two intersections, and we're working on getting cameras at other intersections. We send them the clip of what happened. They go, "No, it's that guy's fault." And then they give him a ticket, and your car gets fixed, and your insurance doesn't get dinged. So that's something we're real proud of. It's been helping out a lot of people. So, but that's all I got.
Thank you so much, Sergeant Turner. That was great. I forgot to mention the staff that's in the room and also our elected officials. You already met Chair Carlotta Harrell. But we also have District 3 Commissioner Dee Anglin III in the back, just to listen in and answer questions if you need them later. We have Rocky Romero, who is our Splosh Director and Public Works Cluster. We have David Simmons, who is DOT Interim Director. We have Sam Baker, who you'll hear from in a few minutes, who is our Transportation Planning Director. We have Talim Salters, who is our Transit Director, and we have a lot of other staff here. So if you should need a card or a pen, just put your hand up, and we'll come get you and get your questions from you. So now I'd like to introduce Sam Baker, and he'll give you a brief presentation about transportation projects coming up.
Thank you, Melissa. Good afternoon, Henry County citizens. Glad you have joined us this afternoon. I have prepared a brief presentation for you today. This presentation is from the perspective of a Henry County citizen who wants to know what transportation projects are going on in Henry County and where do I go to find this information? If you are such a citizen, I suggest you visit the website of the Henry County Department of Transportation Planning. It's a website where you will find a good overview of what has been going on in the area of transportation, what is happening right now, and what is coming up in the near future. I recommend this website because I personally, personally make an effort to make sure the information on this website is up to date. So how do you get to this website? First, you need to go to the website of the Henry County Government at www.co.henry.gas.us. Once you are on our county's homepage, at the top right corner of your computer screen, you will see a Departments tab. Click on the Departments tab, and it will open a list of all the Henry County Departments. From that list, select Transportation Planning Department, and that will bring you to this webpage on the left. Scroll down to the second heading, Transportation Plan, which is right below the Mission section. Here, you will see a list of transportation documents. The one document that I would recommend to you is called Henry County Transportation Book. It's a compilation of all the transportation projects that are going on in Henry County right now. It has two sections. One section is all the GDOT managed projects, and the second section is all the Henry County Splosh Department managed projects. Two disclosures here. It does not list all the long list of road resurfacing projects that are going on. For that, you have to get in touch with our Henry County Department of Transportation. And secondly, it does not list all the city-managed projects, like the projects that are being done by Stockbridge, McDonough, and Locust Grove and Hampton. For that, you have to get in touch with the cities. So other than those two exceptions, this will provide you with a fairly comprehensive list of all the projects, road projects that are going on in Henry County. A second document that I would recommend to you is called Transportation Improvement Program. In short, TIP. And you go to this by clicking the Transportation Projects tab and then going down to the heading Transportation Improvement Program. And here you will see a link to access the Transportation Improvement Program. It's a six-year list of transportation projects that have federal funding allocated. So this document is developed, maintained, and updated by the Atlanta Regional Commission, and it includes Henry County's federally funded transportation projects. Now, all transportation projects do not have federal funds. There are many projects that are 100% locally funded. Those will not show up in the TIP document. For that, you need to go to the website of the Henry County Splosh Department. You go to the Splosh Department's webpage the same way you went to the Transportation Planning Department's webpage, as I mentioned earlier. From the homepage, go to Departments tab, click Splosh Departments, and you will see this page with this banner called Splosh Projects. Click here to visit the cleargov.com website. Once you click there, a second page will open with the title ClearGov, and this is where it will provide information on all the Splosh and T-Splosh funded projects. Splosh, which stands for Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax; T-Splosh, which stands for Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. These are the local sales tax that you voters approved and provides funding for many of the locally funded projects. So with the Henry County Transportation Book, the Transportation Improvement Program, and this ClearGov webpage, you can have a very good understanding of what are the transportation projects that are going on and at what stage they are. Let's talk about some major road projects that are underway. They are State Route 20, Hampton-Mcdonough Road Widening. Construction is in 2023. Rock Quarry Road Widening. Construction in 2023. Western Parallel Connector. Construction in 2024. Jonesboro Road Widening. Construction in 2024. State Route 81 Widening. Construction in 2025. And a new interchange on I-75 at Bethlehem Road. Construction in 2025. Let's talk about State Route 20, Hampton-Mcdonough Road Widening. This project will widen State Route 20 from two lanes to four lanes from I-75 to Phillips Drive. Project is under construction right now. Rock Quarry Road Widening. This project will widen Rock Quarry Road from two to four lanes from north of Eagles Landing Parkway to North Henry Boulevard. Right-of-way acquisition is underway. Construction is scheduled for 2023. Western Parallel Connector. A new four-lane road parallel to I-75 from Jonesboro Road to Hudson Bridge Road with 18-foot median and five-foot sidewalks. Right-of-way acquisition is underway, and construction is in 2024. Jonesboro Road Widening. This is a T-Splosh funded project. It will widen Jonesboro Road from Mill Road to Mount Carmel Road, and design is in progress. State Route 81 Widening. This project will widen State Route 81 from two to four lanes from east of Lemon Street to east of Bethany Road. Right-of-way acquisition is in 2024, and construction is scheduled for 2025. A new interchange on I-75 at Bethlehem Road. Georgia DOT has finalized a design. So the design is to construct a new bridge south of existing Bethlehem Road with four roundabouts, and construction is scheduled for 2025. So I have talked about a number of major road projects. But besides road projects, what else is going on in Henry County in the area of transportation? Well, let me tell you. Henry County undertook three major transportation planning projects, conducted them simultaneously, side by side, and by now has completed all three of them. We updated Henry County's comprehensive transportation plan. We developed a Henry County Transit Master Plan, and we developed a first-time Henry County Trails Plan. As a result of doing all this transportation planning work, we now have an updated 30-year list of transportation projects for implementation. And our transportation plan is summarized in that board, the very right board that you see, where all the projects that are recommended in the transportation plan are shown on two maps, and all the projects are listed there. So before you leave this town hall today, take a look at what projects are in our county's transportation plan. We are in the process of starting a new fixed route local bus service, and this is a recommendation that came straight out of our recently completed Henry County Transit Master Plan. In fact, we have secured a $4.8 million federal grant, and we are using this money to buy a new bus, which is coming. And then we are going to plan to start this new fixed bus service later this year. And we are also working to start something called microtransit or on-demand transit service. What is it? It's very similar to service provided by Uber and Lyft. With the phone and app, you can request a ride, and a Henry County Transit driver and a Henry County Transit vehicle will come and provide a ride within Henry County. And this is in the works as of right now. We have come up with a new logo for Henry County's Transit Service with the name Henry Connect, and you may have seen this name on our transit vehicles. We have come up with a Henry County Trail Network, at least on paper, that we can now work on implementing over time. And we came up with the name and the logo for Henry County's Trail Network, and I'll tell you a little bit more about it. So speaking of Henry County's Transit Service, I told you that we are in the process of starting a new fixed route local bus service. The map that you see on the left, that is the proposed new bus route. And the plan is to, it will start in McDonough Square, go through the city of Stockbridge, up to Henry County, Clayton County border. We came up with the name Henry County, Henry Connect, and a logo for our Transit Service, and you see one of our transit vehicles with this new name and logo. We have come up with a proposed trail network for Henry County. It recommends 87 new trails in our long-term trails plan. We came up with the name Henry Trails and a logo for the trail network to identify a trail and let people know that this is part of Henry County's Trail Network. The plan came up with some ideas and concepts for how the different wayfinding signs will look, including this new name and logo. Our next step with trails planning is to develop something called a Henry Trails Wayfinding Plan, where we are going to come up with specifications for these wayfinding signs, like how high, how wide these signs will be, what the color specification of the brown and that orange will be, and so on. I-75 Commercial Vehicle Lanes. You all must have heard about this. Georgia DOT is planning to construct two barrier-separated commercial vehicle lanes, or in simple English, truck-only lanes, from Macon up to central Henry County, up to exit You citizens, our elected officials, and county staff have some concerns about these commercial vehicle lanes ending at a very, very busy location in central Henry County. To the point, the Henry County Board of Commissioners authorized staff the money to conduct a traffic impact study, and our consultant has completed the study to assess the impact of the commercial vehicle lanes ending at State Route 155. We explored three different scenarios under this impact study. First scenario, what is the traffic flow on I-75 without the commercial vehicle lanes, as is right now, the no-bill situation? The second scenario we looked at is what will the traffic flow be like on I-75 north if those commercial vehicle lanes were constructed as GDOT is planning? And the third scenario is what if those commercial vehicle lanes were extended farther north up to I-675? And the consultants will present their results before the Henry County Board of Commissioners in July, so stay tuned. Last but not the least, we are deploying something called Connected Vehicle Technology in Henry County. What is it? It includes a piece of equipment at a road intersection called roadside unit, and a second piece of equipment in a vehicle or on top of a vehicle called onboard unit. The roadside unit and the onboard unit communicate with each other via radio signal. With Connected Vehicle Technology enabled, it will allow a car to send a signal to a traffic light and change it from red to green, and thus pass through a busy intersection quicker and respond. So as of right now, we have 32 roadside units deployed, shown in that map. We are in the process of acquiring 45 onboard units for our Henry County Fire Department vehicles, and I've been told they are coming in this week. So very soon, with this technology enabled, I expect Henry County Fire Department to be able to respond to emergencies quicker, faster, and can potentially save lives. In conclusion, everything I shared with you is on the website of the Henry County Department of Transportation Planning. So in case you do not remember everything that I said, here's a tip. Just go to the webpage of Transportation Planning Department for more details. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. It was a great presentation. A big overview of projects, but I'm sure you have other questions about maybe local projects, projects that are affecting you and where you live and where you work and where you are. So we're going to have a panel discussion. They're going to set that up now. Just give us a minute to get the panel up here, and then we have Nicholas Ivy in the back, who will get your card if you have some questions. We have index cards and pens. Hand him your card, and I will ask the questions to the panel. And we also have Stephanie Braun, who'll also pick up your cards for you. So please ask questions now. This is the greatest time to get the information you need. We have some great experts up here who've been with the county, who know the plans, who can answer your questions, and I'm telling you, if they don't answer them tonight, they will get back to you with the answer. So please feel free to ask those questions. Thank you. I want to introduce the panel tonight. Beside me is Ty Salters, the Transit Director for Henry County Government. Next is Rocky Romero. He's a cluster lead, and he's the Director of Splosh. Then we have David Simmons, who is our DOT Interim Director, and we have Sam Baker, who is our Transportation Planning Director, and you just heard from Sam. So we have several questions. We got some from Facebook, and we have some from this audience. I know I've spoken to people here, and you have questions even about where you are, so we're going to try to get your questions answered for you. If we can't get those answered tonight, we will get your information, and we will get you those answers, and I assure you of that. So the first question, there's two questions here. One has to do with Sergeant Turner's presentation, and it says, "Will the department accept Nest cameras for registration?" I don't know that. I don't think Sergeant Turner is still here.
Yes, he is.
Oh, is he?
Yes, he is. The Nest cameras are fine for registration. The camera for registration just says, "I live here. I have this camera. Here's my contact information." And that way, we don't contact you if we need to. So there's any cameras. It's just registering.
Great. So the answer is yes. Thank you. So the second question is, "Will I-75 Commercial Vehicle Lanes Traffic Project Expand beyond Exit 216 at some later date?" Do I have that question right? "Will I-75 Commercial Vehicle Lanes Traffic Project expand beyond Exit 216 at some later date?" So I don't know who here would like to tackle that.
I will. As of right now, there is no plan to extend it beyond Exit 216, State Route 155, which is one of the reasons we conducted this traffic impact study, to see what would be the impact or result if it were extended farther north, so that we can have data and have a potential discussion with the Georgia DOT about potentially extending it farther north. But as of right now, the answer is no.
Thank you, Sam. So another question is, "The decision on the start and end points of the road widening determined by traffic study..." Am I missing a part of this? So I think the question is, "How are, what is the decision on the start and end points of a road widening project?"
So basically, we're looking at logical terminal, the beginning and end point. What does really end up being? What makes sense? For example, we have Rock Quarry Road. We start at Eagles Landing, and we end at 138. That's the logical terminal, beginning and end. Another example, real quick, is Jonesboro Road. Jonesboro Road is over six miles long. Can we build a six-mile-long road at one time? Very difficult. So where do we start? Where do we start? We start at I-75, and logical terminal is north Mount Carmel. The next phase will be all the way to the county line. So that's how we determine where to begin and start. Just what makes sense, traffic volume, where the traffic ends. Sometimes the traffic doesn't end, you know? But we have to build it in phases. It's real hard to budget a project that long.
I think it will be helpful to explain to our citizens that what logical terminal is. It is from one road intersection to another road intersection, and we cannot simply stop widening of a road because we reached the Henry County border and just stop in the middle of the road. So it needs to be something logical, from one intersection to another intersection, and not a political boundary.
Thank you, Sam. David, I think this one is for you, and the questions are about roundabouts. Roundabout, and it's kind of a multiple-choice question. "Roundabout or light at South Point Boulevard and 81, where the new apartments are?"
Say that again. I'm sorry.
Is there going to be a roundabout or a light at South Point Boulevard and 81, where there's new apartments?
All right, so the true answer for me is, "I don't know." You're talking about the city of McDonough, and you're talking about Georgia DOT. So I know right now there are no plans, but that might be something that makes a lot of sense down the road. But it's, right now, it doesn't heavily involve unincorporated Henry, but it does involve city of McDonough and Georgia DOT.
Okay, great. The next one was Nail Road and 20?
Nail Road at 20 right now is an R-cut, which stands for Restricted Crossing U-Turn. Georgia DOT put that in. The first one that went in, just as a little background, I think was at Oakland Road and State Route 20. I think we went from, basically there, you can't make a crossing maneuver from the side street. You can make left turns from State Route 20, but if you're on the side street, you can't make a crossing maneuver or a left turn from there. You have to go to the right, go down, pull the U-turn, and come back. And I know, I'd asked Georgia DOT about how that one has done, and I want to say it was something 60, 70 accidents over three years. It was down under, I want to say, five after the R-cut was put in. So it's similar reasoning at Nail Road and State Route 20. Right now, it's an R-cut. Traffic volumes may show that that needs to change eventually, but right now, that's something that Georgia DOT did probably three or four years ago, and I would look for that to be what'll be there for the time being.
Okay. Final is Oakland Road and 20 and Oakland Road 81.
Okay, and I kind of already did Oakland Road at 20, but like I say, that's one of the first R-cuts that happened, might be the first R-cut that happened in Henry County and the state. Pushed for that to reduce the accidents because we had so many accidents from left turn from the side road, which would be Oakland or Simpson Mill, or just through movements going from Oakland to Simpson Mill and vice versa. Oakland at 81, signals or whatever the treatment would be, signal a roundabout, it's going to go through Georgia DOT because that's a state route. 81 is Georgia DOT's. And when you want to do something there, when they'll study it, or if they have somebody to study it, they'll look at it two or three ways. They'll have them study it for a roundabout. They'll have them study it for a signal to try and determine which one provides the, basically, the best return on investment-type scenario. I would say probably right now, and I don't go through the area a lot, several times a year, but not every week, I don't know that Oakland has enough volume on the approach to 81 to get to where they will do a signal there. But down the road from there, I think the accidents actually caused for Newmorn at 81 to become an always-stop. So there's different ways that the state will look at things. Some things is like an interim measure, and some things more of a long-term measure.
Thank you, David. That was great. Mr. Salters, somebody's asking, "I can never get a transit ride. Can I make a reservation 30 days out?" Like, so can you explain maybe? Maybe? And it's, we could take the, that's okay. But if you could explain how that happens and how people can't get a ride, that'd be really helpful, I think.
So what happens is with transit, and that's a great question.
So what happens is with transit, that's a great question. We're allowed to book out as far as a week out. What we don't want to do is take 300 extra trips that we cannot manage. So we ask out as far as a week out and up to the day before. If you do not get a ride, you can call after 8:30. We may have some availability based upon cancellations and no-shows.
Okay, that's great. And what do, who do they call to get that ride, to schedule that ride?
You can call the Transit Office at 770-288-7433.
All right, thank you. This is a very big question for Mr. Romero. How long does it take to plan any road project?
Good question. And it depends. It depends if it's, if we go through the GDOT process or if we go through just our normal county process. If we go through the GDOT process, it takes about literally seven years to design from the big time. We start the design and actually start construction. And it's just because of all the extra steps going through the GDOT process or plan development process. For example, I'll give you a good example. Rockaway Road, we started the design in 2016. So right now, we're in 2023. We completed all the roadway. We hopefully put it out for bid this September, October of this year. So that's how long it has taken just to get to the point where we're at right now. Now, on the other hand, we have projects that are 100% funded by the county. Good example is Build Warner Parkway. It's a TIS Plus project. TIS Plus was voted in two years ago. We started collecting funds for that two years ago. And we already have preliminary plans. We're working on utility relocation plans right now. We should have those hopefully by the end of summer and we should be able to start right away at the end of this year. So it's a shorter process going through the federal process, going back to the federal process. We've got to go through what they call NEPA, an environmental process. We've got to go through all the, it's a lot of, lot of steps that we have to take. But short, short answer, seven years going through the GDOT process, two or three years if we go through, through the county process.
There's no, there's no short answer for that question. I think it's important, and I know Rocky and I have talked about this and David and I have talked about this, that you sometimes have right-of-way acquisition, you have these impact studies. That takes a long time. That's a legal battle sometimes. And then you have design and you have approvals. And so things don't happen quickly in government, but they don't happen quickly so they can happen correctly.
And of course, the bigger the project, the longer it's going to take. An intersection, we can do it much faster and a dirt road, much faster than a widening of a road.
Thank you. This question says, "How often does the county cut the right-of-ways?" Who wants to answer that question?
That's probably not.
Okay.
I just know that historically, or at least maybe in the last few years, it's not a great answer, but it's probably three to four times per summer is about how often we can get a rotation through the same area from once the spring growing season starts to when we finally get a frost. So we don't have a lot of personnel. We use them as efficiently as we can, but as far as tractor and bush hog cutting, there are several, several weeks in between cuttings, probably on average, maybe six weeks.
And there's always a schedule for it, is that right?
Yeah, they have a certain route that they go. And of course, occasionally I say, "I need you guys to do something else." And depending on how many people are needed, they may not do it for a day or two or three because they have to jump to something else.
David, I'm going to give you another question since you're on a roll. Who is responsible for removing dead deer or any other roadkill from the roads?
Henry County DOT will remove dead deer from Henry County roads.
How can somebody get a deer removed from their road?
They call it in or you could do C-click Fix, but you can call our office, 770-288-7623. And we try to get to those because when they've sat for more than two or three days, it makes it harder on us.
And David mentioned C-click Fix, which is an app that you can get if you have a smartphone and you can log in your issue or your problem and you can track that and see how the county is taking care of it and it goes through the process and there's a record of it. So it's a great app for potholes, for the deer disposal, for a lot of things in the county. So check it out if you have a minute, C-click Fix. Okay, thank you, David. I have two questions kind of related to buses. So when you reference the word bus, are you only referring to the minibus and do you plan to change to large buses? What is the cutoff time for those buses? So I guess, I guess the question is, are we referring to the transit buses we have now or are we referring to larger transit buses? Maybe Mr. Salters can answer that.
A pilot fixed bus route. So that's going to be a larger bus. As of right now, we service residents with cutaways, which are usually anywhere from a 12-passenger to the 16-passenger vehicle with equipped with a wheelchair lift.
And then on that, the additional question for that is, who is your target market other than the large retailers where these buses are going? And maybe that means where these fixed routes will go, so...
Well, we just received a grant from ARC to do a study about where the bus stops should go. They're going to look at people who is going to work, people who are looking to go to other places like doctor's offices. So there's going to be a study that tells us exactly where should we put those stops along the way. We do also want to implement the parking right lots for those that are committing outside of the county.
Thank you very much. All right, here's a question and I'm not sure who wants to answer it. "What is the road expansion plan for Jonesboro Road with regards to the new public construction?" Are we aware of that?
Yeah. So like I mentioned before, Jonesboro Road, we're going to be widening from I-75 to North Mount Carmel. We've been in contacts with the developer of the Publix and also there's other developments down, down the road. And that's one of the reasons we have kind of slowed down the design process because there's so many aspects of developers that we have to coordinate meetings with them and the design with them. There's also the widening of Mount Olive, which is going to become the Western Peller Connector. Of course, we also have Mill Road widening. So we have two construction projects, also flipping, I'm sorry, I got flipping also, flipping extension. So we have three projects that tie into Jonesboro plus the developments. So we've been coordinating with all that. There will be a proposal slide. The developer has made a, done a traffic study. Once the Publix is, and there's also retail going in there, signal will be in place most likely once we widen it. It'll be in place prior of the widening, but once we widen it, it's still going to be in place. We're just going to hopefully, the goal is to minimize the signal and acquiring that, we're going to try to do early acquisition on the southern part because the northern part, that's where the Publix is located. And hopefully, we can work it out where the signal, the poles are in place for the future, so it will not be affected.
Thank you. Sam, this might be a good question for you. Can they have, I guess they meaning the county or the state, can they have a commercial vehicle only exit between 155 and Bill Gardner? And I guess that's where a lot of the tractor-trailer traffic is coming in, so...
I don't think so because the intersections need to be at least a certain distance apart. And with this new interchange that we're building at Bethlehem Road, I think it would be too many having another one at the location that you mentioned.
Okay, thank you. But since you mentioned that interchange at Bethlehem Road, that is an opportunity for traffic relief. So can you just speak quickly to that and how that will affect traffic?
A new interchange at Bethlehem Road is expected to reduce congestion on State Route 155 and trucks will be able to access this new interchange and depend less on 155 and exit 216. So that's how we expect it will relieve traffic congestion on State Route 155.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Here's a question. "I live in Creekwood Station up the road on 2081. When will the project start? What is the time project, projection for completion?" Are we familiar with this project?
I think they're talking about the project that's already happening. It's between Phillips and I-75. I think Creekwood's in there. I don't necessarily remember where every neighborhood is.
Across from the recycling center?
Yeah. Okay, so yeah, you're, you're kind of near the recycling center. Is it across the road? Yeah, that's, it's a, well, it has started. The clearing, most of that has been done. Probably it will look like things aren't moving super fast, but most of the stuff that'll be going on after the clearing is utility relocation. So it's, you don't quite get the same gratification as grading and clearing with the utility relocation. So, but they'll have to do that before they can do more grading. But that, that project's probably got from beginning to end, probably around two years. So I would imagine it hopefully will be finishing up sometime in calendar year '25.
Thank you, David. So here's a question. "I live on a dirt road and I want it paved. What is the process?"
What's the dirt road? So we do have, Henry County has, believe it or not, close to about, close to 100 miles still of dirt roads, mostly on the south end, District 1. There's some on District 3. But mainly the process is trying to get it in the next, in the SPOLOST program. Since we've been implementing SPOLOST, we've paved over close to about 60 miles of dirt roads. Currently, we're working on the design or buying the roadway on Berg Road. So mainly if we can put, if, you know, next program, SPOLOST 6 is coming, it'll be here before we know it, is going out for vote next November of '24. So talk to your commissioner, come to our meetings. We do held meetings. And let's get the input of which dirt road we're talking about and then hopefully we can pave it.
Okay. Here's a really easy question. "What, how are transportation projects funded?" So I know there's a lot of different funding mechanisms, maybe we can get more than one answer on that.
Yeah, there's a lot of funding. Like I mentioned, SPOLOST is one. Of course, TIS Plus. We do have L-MIG. L-MIG is for resurfacing. DOT, David, turns every year an application to Georgia DOT and we receive roughly about $2 million.
Yeah, we have to match...
30%.
L-MIG stands for Local Maintenance Improvement Grant. We have to match it with 30% county funding and normally we've been hitting their money is, say, 2.3 million and our match is around 700,000. So we normally end up with about 3 million. Sounds like a lot of money until you start trying to pick roads to resurface with it and the cost for each road. But yes, and it's great and great to have it, but that's always tough.
There's also federal funded through ARC. There's a call of projects every couple of years. We've been very lucky to receive funds through that. I can tell you, State Route 81 and also Rockaway Road, we have received funding for design, roadway and construction. Right now, we're looking at Rockaway Road, we're going to be receiving close to $26 million towards construction, which, that's very good because TIS Plus, we have a set amount of funds for that. So whatever we don't use in TIS Plus, we can use that towards resurfacing for the county.
Great, thank you, gentlemen. Another question is, "Will the transportation book notate what improvements are planned for specific intersections?" I'm guessing that means that how can people know what plans are in place for intersections going forward? And I know Sam had mentioned the website, but if you could explain that a little bit more, whoever wants to take that one on.
As far as plans, all the projects come from Henry County's Transportation Plan. That's where we start with. From that plan, we pick certain projects. If they have federal funds, then they are placed in the second document called Transportation Improvement Program. And if it doesn't have any federal funds, the money comes locally, then it comes from SPOLOST that Rocky talked about or TIS Plus. So as far as plans, you know, look at Henry County's Transportation Plan and that board that I pointed out to you. That shows what our intersections and projects that are in our plan over the next 25, 30 years.
Great, thank you, Sam. So how does the county pick roads for resurfacing? Is there, how, what is the process or is there a criteria?
We, we had the roads rated by a consultant in '21 and we try to go off of that ratings list. The L-MIG funding I mentioned, we typically, it's divided evenly over the five county districts. And we take that, let's say, 600,000 per district. And we try and look for roads with, typically, we are going after roads with poor scores. And unfortunately, there's plenty of them. But, but we, we do that and we just try and, you know, sometimes a road may need it, but it might be $2 million. Well, that well exceeds the budget that I've got to work with. So we just either try and hold it for, and combine it, or we may pick various neighborhoods that just fit together well enough to try and use the funding we've got. But we normally do go after roads, I would say, pretty much always go after roads with some of the poorer scores. And it gets kind of difficult because a lot of times they're pretty similar. So, but that's, that's how we're using the 2021 ratings list and we target those. We have done a little bit of pavement preservation, not with L-MIG funding, on roads that are still in pretty good shape and it's just trying to extend the life of the road. And it might get a high-density mineral bond or you might just call it like a, like a seal coat, but it's better typically than your average parking lot seal coat. So that's pretty much how we do it. And we tend to get, you know, with each district commissioner with the list that we recommend and we kind of chat that over and then I'll bring it to the Board of Commissioners.
So to piggyback on that, the question is, how does the county decide what transportation projects are prioritized? Do you take suggestions from residents? So maybe you can speak to how residents can have a say in how some of these projects go.
So we do, going back to the SPOLOST and of course, the CTP. CTP is kind of like the 30-year. But then, that's the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. But then, once we go to like, for example, SPOLOST 6, we'll have meetings throughout the county. We'll pull projects from the CTP, but we also get input from, from the citizen. Dirt roads, you know, you know, there's a concern about dirt roads, we'll listen to that. We'll try to do a combination of projects. So we have intersection improvements, we have dirt roads, we got four-lane widening roads, so...
Okay, thank you. "Why is traffic always so backed up on Highway 20 in front of South Point Shopping Area? It's like the lights are on a bad timing schedule."
I have a volume.
Take that one.
I'll talk. I don't know where I'll end up, but the Virgin Diamond was recently finished and my understanding is Georgia DOT will look at a new timing through there. I don't know if you'll see drastic differences. Sometimes it's just there's so many cars, 81, you know, 20's saturated and at 81's saturated and it's just tough to get cars through there. So, but basically, short answer, my understanding is GDOT will look at like basically a corridor timing, but it, you know, it'll, there'll always be traffic there.
Okay, that's an answer. Can we, now let me ask you this. "Why does the county keep approving development when our roadways can't handle the current traffic?" And this, this has been addressed by our Board of Commissioners at a meeting, at a previous meeting several months ago. But does anybody feel that question?
My understanding, not an attorney...
Yeah, let's, maybe our county manager can answer that? Or Mr. Kirk, Tucson Kirk, if you'd like to answer that?
We have the same panel here. I'd love to hear their opinion.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Let's try, David.
Oh, okay. My understanding, at least legally, you can't prohibit development based off of traffic. That's, that's kind of the short answer. We do try and get what we can as part of that. We've gotten contributions for future improvements. We've made them do improvements. So there is that. Sometimes it might take years to materialize, but, but that's kind of the short answer there.
Thank you. "Why does the interstate always back up only in Henry County?"
I don't know.
Henry County is popular.
Okay, go ahead, Sam.
Henry County being along I-75 between Port of Savannah and City of Atlanta makes it an ideal location for developments to locate here. It's a relatively less expensive place to live, so people choose to live in Henry County. And there are a lot of jobs here, so there is a lot of economic activity, making Henry County an ideal location for people to move to and work. And where people are, where cars are.
So that goes back to some transit issues that you've addressed in this 30-year transit plan. Is that fair to say, Mr. Salters?
So when you look at traffic, everyone in Henry County is about 245,000 residents when we did our study, Transit Master Plan. 67% of the residents get in their car every day just to commute in and out and around Henry County. That's more than... That's more than half. So now, when you're building more developments, more stores, everybody's driving to these places. When you try to provide transit as an alternative, you're reducing the amount of cars that are on the road. That's what would help with traffic.
Okay, thank you. Sal, yes?
Just, just add. You know, part of it, you've got 675, 75 coming together, and then just the spacing of the interchanges, you've, you get, you feel the ebb and flow on the interstate when you are moving. So when you've got 228, Exit 228, and you've got 675, and then just down below, it's 224, 222, 221, 218, then you get 216, then you get a four-mile break, but we're going to put a Bethlehem in the middle of that. So, you know, a lot of it's that, too. So you've just got a lot of intermingling of cars getting on and off, too, along with the, the amount of traffic.
Thank you, very good. So the other question. So Henry County is overwhelmed with tractor-trailer traffic, especially on 42 South. I've heard that there will be truck-only routes or lanes, is that really a possibility?
That's one thing Sam had mentioned before, is the commercial vehicle lanes, basically two, two, and I think it necks down eventually to one, additional truck-only lane on northbound 75. So that is something that Georgia DOT has in progress. And they probably have some sort of link to it on their website, just to kind of give you an idea. It's, it's a design build, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. So when it goes out, it's actually to like an engineering firm and a contractor as a team. So it's, it's similar to how they did the, what's the thing? Managed lane in the center of the interstate, so.
And those truck lanes are going to go from 475 all the way to just past Bethlehem.
Okay, great. I think it's important for people to understand that not every road is dictated by what the county wants. We have to work with the state, with GDOT, with the federal government, and with the cities. Is that fair to say? So sometimes the process is more involved than just one person making a decision. Here's a very specific question. Are there any plans to widen Snapping Shoals Road in Ola? Traffic has increased, and the road is way too narrow.
Yes. On our SPLUS 5, we did put funds for the design of widening Snapping Shoals all the way to River Road. Of course, it's just designed, so hopefully, in SPLUS 6, we'll be able to acquire the roadway and actually build it as well.
Okay, great. With the new Aquatic Center coming to Cotton Fields, what are the plans to manage the expected increase in visitor traffic?
So one of the things, of course, hopefully, by the time we open the Aquatic Center, State Route 20 will be completed. There will be a roundabout right there at McDonough Parkway, and it's going to tie into a road that SPLUS 5 completed, 4 and 5 completed, that is right behind us. We're also going to be, we're working on a design currently to design, we're designing a roundabout right here at McDonough Parkway, and also, well, I guess it's called Henry Connector, and Henry Parkway. So there'll be a roundabout there, a roundabout at 20. That would help the flow of the Aquatic Center. Of course, the Aquatic Center will, the entrance will be on a four-lane divided highway.
Good, good to know. And this is, this will be our last question, because we are running out of time, and it has to do with roundabouts. I see roundabouts at busy intersections. Are there more planned roundabouts, and where? So you already mentioned a few, but are, can you name any others?
Currently, we're working on, on the construction, the racetrack at Iris Lake. We bid out, and the board approved it last month, is the bridges that will roundabouts. So that one is going to be under construction fairly soon. We're also buying, currently buying roadway at the intersection of Airline at McGurty. That's going to be a roundabout as well. So, yeah, we're building basically pretty much all the roundabouts, except a few have been built through, through SPLUS.
Thank you. So I want to thank everyone for your questions tonight. I hope that you got the answers you wanted, but if you didn't and you need more information, please reach out. We work for you. We work for the citizens and the residents of Henry County. Reach out to us through email or phone. And all of these panelists, all these excellent, intelligent people will be happy to answer your questions and give you the, the best advice or the best answer they can. So please feel free to do that. We're, we're always at, at the service of our residents, and we want, we want you to come to us when you need something, and we can help you with that. So thank you for coming, thank you for taking your time out tonight, I know you could be doing other things. Is there a question? Oh, yeah. Stuff? And we do have some swags, and bags, and some books, and things out on the foyer, so please feel free to take some things. We just want you to know that we're thinking of you, and we're happy to answer your questions, and we really are trying to get Henry moving in the right direction. So thank you very much.